Good evening. September 19th, 5:00 PM. We are having the business meeting for the Little Falls School Board. Please stand at this time and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Little Falls Community Schools promotes personal and academic excellence in a collaborative, safe, and engaging environment. Do we have any public comments at this time?
No, we do not.
Nobody has signed in for any? Okay, thank you. Then at this time, I will ask for an approval motion for the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Doug. And a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we'll ask for a motion for the consent agenda. This includes the personnel and the approval of the prior meeting minutes. A motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor for the consent agenda. Are there any comments, concerns, or other reasons that this should be changed on either of those two points? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then I will now turn it over to Director Gerby for the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. Mark?
Thank you. Mark introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas the following has generously offered to donate to Little Falls Community Schools, therefore be it resolved by Little Falls Community School Board of Education to gratefully accept their gifts. Midway USA Foundation, donation of $2,969 to the Clay Target League. Minnesota Deer Hunters Association, donation of $1,737.51 to the Clay Target League. Royalton Sportsman's Club, donation of $200 to Little Falls Community Schools for purchase of school supplies. Virginia M. Pedersen, donation of $1,000 to Little Falls Teaching Staff for out-of-pocket expenses. St. Paul and Minnesota Foundation, donation of $4,000 to the Blanch and Avery James Scholarship Fund. Rebecca Jacobson-Stall, donation of $750 to AdVid Scholarships. Rebecca Jacobson-Stall, donation of $1,500 for the Carol Stahl Scholarship Fund. Carnegie Library, donation of $500 to the Friends of Little Falls Library Scholarship Fund. I make the motion, I need a second.
I will second.
And Doug?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you, Mark. At this time, we will have Superintendent Greg Johnson do a presentation for us under childcare collaboration and our enrollments.
What would like to take a few minutes to provide the status of a potential childcare partnership that we are hopefully going to enter into with the city of Little Falls. Want to be really clear that no decision has been made, any decision that will be made regarding the status of this partnership falls on the school board. And I'll touch really briefly again in my presentation about a potential timeline. At any point, please fire away any questions. Mark is here as well to share information. And then we'll have a couple of guests join us. Carol and Greg are here as well to talk a little bit about the need of childcare within our community. Again, I'll cover the need, why we're here, why we're doing this, with the opportunity of a city partnership and grant. Why should we get involved? Our current planning, and then our next steps as a board. There's a few quotes, board members in the packet that you have in front of you that I think really makes some strong cases regarding the need for childcare within our community and the crisis level that it's at. This is from a recent survey, a national survey of daycare providers, that at the national level, more than one in every three of the respondents to that survey, inclusive of all settings, said they were considering leaving their childcare program or closing their family childcare home within the next year, with another 14% saying maybe. The childcare industry is critical to the American economy. Not only does the sector generate its own economic output, but since childcare ensures that working parents can go to work, the industry also acts as a support to every other industry. In other words, when the childcare industry is strong, it boosts other sectors. And then finally, the struggle to find childcare that many parents are facing right now is also a top concern for our business community. Businesses and policymakers are paying close attention to our nation's situation because, again, a robust childcare system supports a healthy workforce and economy. Things that I'm certain you're well aware of, but I think make a very good point as to why we're considering this venture. Again, we're at a crisis level within our community, within our county, within our state. Data that Mark and I have been able to pull from people within the area would say that within the city of Little Falls, there's likely 300 spots needed for childcare, and within the county, over 600 spots that are needed currently. It's obviously having an impact on our workforce. We feel it as a school district of over 400 employees. We provided a very brief update to our own teaching staff and staff at a recent back school. Welcome back. After that presentation, I was contacted by a number of staff wondering if this is going to happen, and if it is, how soon before we open our doors. The interest is there. And then really, most importantly, the work that we do is always preparing children for school. The world's best workforce schools that we have within our state talk about preparing children for kindergarten, preparing children for reading well by third grade, and closing any achievement gaps. And I think a strong childcare program paired with a strong preschool program really can help eliminate some of those barriers. I don't think we'd necessarily be here today if it wasn't for a partnership with the city. The city has a grant to be able to put towards a facility of $1.5 million. They have a really tight timeline, and they have to have a plan to hunt to the federal government by the end of this calendar year. And so that's why we're here today, to bring this to you, share more information, to field any questions that you have, and then hopefully spend the next couple of meetings, I have a timeline in here, next couple of meetings with you folks digging even deeper into the weeds with what our plan could look like. How can we help as a school district? Again, we're typically not in the business of childcare. There are a number of districts within the state that do provide childcare. Some of the, I think, important aspects that we can bring to the table that others can't is our experience in working with children is unmatched. Our connection to preschool. So many families right now drop off their children at a childcare center, oftentimes have to come back to pick up a child, bring them to preschool. I think there's some ways, if we were to have a childcare center onsite, close to our preschool, that we could eliminate that barrier for families. Convenience for families, again, the expertise of our staff, access to social workers within our schools, the impact on enrollment. We met today again with representatives from Children's First Financial, and they talked about some of these really important pieces that a childcare center could bring to our school district. And they talked about the impact on open enrollment in school districts that offer childcare. Families that bring their children to childcare center, enroll in preschool, keep their kids in the school district until they graduate. Again, relationships. They also talked about how the children in the childcare center get to know the custodians, the secretaries, the office staff, some of the other teaching staff, and those relationships are really important to our families. We have a pretty nice playground. We have access to food service. The safety and security within our schools is also very strong. We have a very strong community services program that I think there's potential there to partner. For our special education staff, it's pretty unique that if we have young children in a childcare center that are struggling, for our special ed staff to be able to be there to support, provide advice to the people in that center would be beneficial. We have leadership within our school district, in our schools, that also can support and supervise staff. And another one that we heard more about today is the opportunity for year-round employment for our own staff. We have a number of staff that would love to be employed during the summer months, and this could provide that for our own employees. What we've done so far is Mark and I have had a number of meetings with the city of Little Falls to talk, learn more about their grant timeline, their possibilities, and how we can help. Mark and I have met twice with First Children's Financial. They're experts in the childcare business. They provide financial models. They'll work closely with school districts and other entities to support childcare. We've also talked with Contagity a little bit about the possibility of what a facility would cost based on the size of the facility that we would need. And we've also talked to the Minnesota Department of Education. Catch my breath, any questions so far?
In any of these discussions, has it been brought up about transportation? Will this still fall on the parents, or will we be expected to provide that also?
We are not expected to provide transportation to any children under the age of five unless they qualify for special education, is my understanding. We do provide transportation to preschool, I believe, for four-year-olds. I can't imagine we would provide preschool if this weren't for, excuse me, provide transportation for daycare.
Greg, where does the collecting of fees for each child fall on us, or who? I mean, who does, obviously, they have to pay for the daycare.
Correct.
And so who does the collection? And if somebody doesn't pay, I just want to be clear on what our
Responsibilities?
Responsibilities are.
Yeah, those are things that will work out, but typically within community education or community services is where this collaboration team seems to work really well. Our community services department right now works with families within our after-school program as they collect fees and do some of that work. So it would be a part of our community services department.
Okay.
Can you talk a little bit more about that, Greg, and how, like, what is our relationship with the city when it comes to policies and procedures? Are we dictating how the program's going to run? Like, at what point are they just more financial for us, or what does that look like?
Is there going to be a joint governing board?
Have we got there yet?
I do not think, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, and thanks to Greg and Mark for even starting the conversation with us on the partnership. Five years ago, we would have thought that $1.5 million would have been enough to do everything, to be able to get it started, and then all of a sudden, here we go. And to find out what a challenge it is to do it together is really surprising. Like I said, you'd have thought the $1.5 would have taken care of everything, but no, at this point, it doesn't. We haven't really gotten into, you know, what are the financials going to be? I know that that $1.5 million will all be going towards this project. Some of it will be doing the plans and drafting of the plans, but we haven't really gotten to that part. I believe that the city is also, I hope council's not watching this, but the city is already talking about other possible ways, either through the Economic Development Authority, which we just did help, Economic Development Authority, Little Falls did help another childcare. And so those things really haven't been ironed out totally until if they would get the, you'd be kind enough to approve this project, then we'd iron out more of those details. But we've had great discussions so far, and we're willing to do anything we can because we know the importance of childcare. I just read something on Sunday, how the entire state, Greater Minnesota, is suffering greatly trying to find childcare because there is no right answer. And Carol can tell you more about that, because you can do one thing, two things, pay for this facility or pay for the help. There's not enough cash to pay for both of them. So a collaboration at this point is the only way I could see. And then we will continue to seek grants through other opportunities that the city has, hopefully, to give to the amount of money that we're going to need to make this work. And we are very confident that we will be able to do that. Sorry if I kind of beat around the bush there a little bit.
Not really, but one of you mentioned it, and that's where I was going. Is there going to be, like, representatives from the city that work with the school? Will there be, like, a board that oversees the program? I don't know if you guys have gotten there, and maybe I'm too far.
I think the next slide talks a little bit about a working group pulled together that would include stakeholders within our community who are invested in our childcare program. So absolutely, good questions. We need to have that.
Have local businesses, especially the large ones, like the hospital, the dog food, all of those, Cam Ripley, have they been putting input in at this point?
We've been in conversations with some of them, but not all of them.
I spoke with Cam Ripley today, last week or the week before. Mark and I met with Barrett, and I believe next week, we have a meeting with La Bash to talk about the discussions that we're having so far.
Some of these businesses have told me, you know, we would be interested in exploring options. You know, do you want to have us sponsor so many slots, you know, for their employees? And that would come in to, you know, subsidize some of the operating expenses for this. I mean, I've been, I've been looking at this issue for over 20 years now. And, you know, you can do it in your home. Those people do all right. But when you need a center, and you need a center because of the big need that we have, they don't cash flow. Know how? No way. Unless it's a facility that's been built for a while, and, you know, they don't have a lot of debt service or something, but, you know, we had to help one here, you know, because it just doesn't cash flow. You've got enough money to pay your debt service for your employees, not both. So when you step back and say, this is a big nut to crack, how do we do it? Well, one of the ways is to partner with the school district, and, you know, to, that they can provide the teachers. And, you know, then with this working group, I mean, if you can get it to where the city has a grant of one and a half million dollars, you're a long ways there then to getting it built and built. Then when the people pay the tuition for their kids to go to the daycare, that can come back to the school district to help pay for some of the staffing costs. I mean, that's how it can work. I don't know if you do a joint powers agreement, or just have the working group work on all of this. But we're just starting to get into this. Then you want to have the businesses come in, and some have said, yeah, you know, we're willing to come and give us a plan, you know, tell us what you need, and then we can work with them. So that's where they're just starting to make those steps right now.
Well, and what I would add is the other piece to this puzzle is we're having, in our council meeting tonight, discussion on housing, because you all know the need for housing in this area. And the housing, the childcare, because we have over 300 jobs coming to this community in the next one and a half to two years. And that would be so good for the school district if we can bring them in, because you know that they're going to have children, of course. So we see it as, you know, almost a cycle of, you know, one step at a time that all ties together. And so we're really excited about that, that this is one of the three-legged stools like John Rodmacher talks about, that we truly need, otherwise. Carol, how many did they say at the workforce center? There was like 200 people that were unemployed, and 100 of them needed daycare.
Yeah, and this was a couple of years ago, and I asked our workforce center folks, how many people you got on the roll? Oh, at that time, they had about 200. And they said, 100 of them, we can find them jobs, no problem. Of the other 100 that are left, there's about 50%, they're just not employable. The other 50% or 50 there go to work, but they don't have daycare. And that's what is keeping people from going to work, is daycare. And it's not just here, it's all over the nation, you know? So it's a huge problem, and we have to start thinking out of the box on how we're going to tackle this, because an individual daycare developer can't make it.
Well, we were very, very fortunate to get this $1.5 million. I had a discussion with Staber, and he came to town, and we, that's where it kicked it off. And then we had Tina Smith, and then enclose our body into it. So both sides of the aisle were working together to help us get this. And so we're very, very fortunate, because without this $1.5 million, we'd really be in a rut.
Greg, is there any information about school districts who currently have a childcare, and what, how long does it take cash flow? Do they make money? Do, I mean, have they seen the enrollment increases and stuff?
Would they have? We've, again, Children's First Financial is heavily engaged with school districts. The person we met with today for our second meeting, she works directly with school districts in the state of Minnesota, and, oh, I lost my train of thought here. Mark chime in at any point.
You're the backup marks that, the districts that are doing this really well right now are Montevideo, Bucky Harley, and Lanesboro. Those three have really successful models. There's another one in Madison that she said would be worthy of taking a look at and visiting with more to understand. So, and I'm sure that there's more. Those are just, those are just within the territories that those two individuals cover, and the state's divided up for them. So we have, we have models to look at and to go and see and to understand. You know, it's, there's different, there's different ways that you, that you look at how you structure your fees for some things that can affect how quickly you cash flow a project or not.
That's what Children's First Financial puts together, is that financial model. So you can see initially, there's a startup cost, and that's where, I don't want to speak for Greg and John and the city, but in a previous conversation with John, I think there's some strong potential to help with those startup costs. But then after, after year two and three, it's not break even, but the out-of-pocket cost, so to speak, from the district drops significantly.
Go ahead.
Here's an example. So year, year two or three, the out-of-pocket cost for the district, again, based on an estimated model from Children's First Financial, would be roughly $12,000. If we attract one family through that, that's $12,000 if we bring in an open and whole student into our district because of a childcare center like that. So when you weigh the long-term benefits, not only financially, but what it will do educationally for our students.
I'm totally in favor of this, but I want to make sure fiscally that we do this correctly. We partner with the city with police officer. Our costs this year went up $17,000, what we're talking about. That's something that we just can't kick out of our budget to incur. So the city likewise, then, in this particular situation, we need some kind of an in-kind agreement, because our costs can't keep going up, because that takes away from our kids. And we all know we need childcare. I mean, there's just no doubt about it. So, but it can't be one-sided. And somehow or another, when we're making this plan, before we sign on, we have to have a firm class agreement. We all know that grants are not the answer. Grants come and go. And if you depend on grants, it hurts our other kids. And I'm, I'm in favor of childcare, and I'm in favor of schools doing it, but we really need the labor cost situation. And everywhere that I've looked at, where you lose money is a zero to two, because you have to have far more people to cover the zero to twos. And three and up
That's accurate.
Three and up, you can put more people with, or more kids with more people. So there's a lot of planning. I don't think there's anybody sitting here, and I can't speak for the other board, that's against childcare. I don't think there's anybody that doesn't realize we're going to be creating 300 to 400 jobs. I mean, the school district created the road to, for Barrett. We also included up there, we've, we've been a part of hundreds of jobs. I don't know if people have looked at us as a school district doing that, but I know we did. And I wanted on the same firm ground that we did that, so that we don't have to cut our budgets in other places in effect, because we really do, with our budgets affect kids. And if the state doesn't give us more money, we can't raise prices. That's just how we are. We have to make a budget to pay for our expenses. And I don't want to sound like the grump here, but I'm really in favor of this, but I'm going to look very carefully at how it's set up before I agree to it. Because I don't think financially, I mean, we got, like I said, increased costs for the police, that we all know is important to have a police officer at our school. That's why we hired two ex-police chiefs and a retired officer that are hall monitors in our schools, so that security-wise, we're all in favor of security. But the costs of it, we have to, we don't have a pile of money out there. Everybody understand where we're at? I mean, and I don't want to throw water on anything, I want us to move forward on this, but we're going to look at it fiscally also.
Well, which we greatly understand. I think what's been encouraging is to hear that originally, when we were looking at it, we didn't know if it would somewhat cash flow until five, 10 years out, and now it sounds through First Children's that we're going to get closer after a couple of years. Then, so it's going to take an altogether collaboration, obviously. And this $1.5, of course, is
Up in the bucket.
Yeah. With, but without it, that's all we'd have, is the bucket.
Maybe I'm pulling a Kelsey, jumping ahead here a bit. But in all your planning, it's great to have everything brand new, but are there facilities that are in this area that could be regenerated, repurposed for this, instead of building new?
You know, we talked about that, and talked about some
I figured you would have.
Some potential facilities. But if you look at, if you look at the savings that can be incurred by, from an operational standpoint
Right.
By connecting to an existing facility that we have, and sharing some of those resources back and forth, that's huge. It also drives down costs of construction, where some of those services, let's take food service, for example, if we had to find another facility, well, now we'd also have to build a commercial-grade kitchen
That's true.
And do some of these other things now. So we have looked at that, but as Greg pointed out with this slide, there's a lot of things that we can do if the facility is within really close proximity, if not attached, to an existing facility that we have.
Do you guys, have you talked about a goal? I mean, there's 300, 300, 600 in need, with more coming. Do we have a goal of, like, how many children's spots there are going to be at this daycare to help our need in our community?
Yeah, really good question. We've run models on facility size to meet the needs of 70 children, up to just over 100 children.
Which is still 500 slots below what we have in the county.
Well, this problem's not going to go away.
Nope.
Has there been any thoughts on if this would affect anything that we currently have right now, such as like Kids Corner, or Kids Hideout, or is there any?
Kids Corner and Kids Hideout are both
Older.
Schooling. School age care.
Correct.
So if, um, this wouldn't necessarily affect that. The, the area that it could potentially affect would be, um, the wraparound care that exists for, for preschool kids already over at their early childhood center. However, if you, if you size the building appropriately, you could have those kids be a part of the, the daycare with, um, with that early childhood. So in other words, that, that wraparound daycare program that ties up a room, that could move into the daycare facility. And there could be more preschool classrooms in the, in the current one, which would then allow us to, to possibly eliminate the waiting list that exists right now.
Eliminate that waiting list. And this year, we need to enter into a lease with a local church or some early childhood family slash opportunities because we don't have space right now within our existing.
What hours are we looking at? I mean, daycare can be 24 hours a day. So what are we looking at with the city or?
We've looked at a 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Okay, 6 to 6, okay.
The other thing with your question, I think it, it provides an opportunity with our Kids Hideout program in the summer. When we have those programs running at the doors, also keeping the daycare open. I think there's ways to, to utilize staff more efficiently than that.
Do you think there are enough staff, that we can get enough staff? That's my concern too. Staffing is a whole other ballgame. Because if you're talking 70 to 100 kids, that's a lot of staff.
It is. Rough estimates, it would be in that ballpark of about 25 staff. Run a childcare center like that.
Plus a custodian or two.
Uh, we would have to expand that, yes. The other piece that we have that's a unique opportunity, and I know the longer it's brought it up a number of times, is the opportunity that we have to provide experiences to our own students, be able to come in and help. And I, I think there's real potential there. Certainly not 25 physicians.
So is that like the CNA program where we provide for kids at nursing homes here in town and stuff for?
Yeah, you can do a, you can do a certified daycare assistant.
We talked about that a few years ago and we were looking at this.
But then Lincoln is over there and the high school kids are here to get back and forth. I mean, it's a half an hour across town with the trains. I mean, there's, so how many hour, I mean, would they be in like a three-hour block or?
Which way are you driving?
Hey, you haven't been out lately.
City's going to address that.
Yeah, the city's, the city's going to build a bridge.
Or a tunnel.
There's fun, there was funding in the, uh, transportation bill this year, of course, that didn't get passed.
Right.
But yeah, that's, we've been, this is another reason why we need that bridge over there.
Exactly.
So Brad can get there faster.
Exactly.
So he's waiting for the tunnel.
World's best workforce schools earlier and a component that we're talking about right now is that college and career readiness. And we're doing some really unique things. Mark is working with our, our TTE teachers in the north wing of the building to look at a, a unique schedule to be able to enhance opportunities for students in the, in the career fields. And I think that could exist within this partnership. So it's not, I have to drive over there, I only have about 20 minutes to spend and I have to drive back. I think we can, again, look for creative ways to schedule students and check through other boxes.
And Brad, we asked that question to a number of districts that we've visited with already. And we asked them, if you were to do this, would you put it closer to your high school or closer to your early childhood? And every one of them said, no, you're, you can bust those kids if you need to over there. But, but you're better off, you're going to gain more efficiencies and see more cost savings if you can connect your early childhood building to a daycare.
Okay.
So putting it, putting it over on this side would.
Well, I just, I don't.
It would, it would decrease the efficiencies that could be gained significantly.
Sharon, thank you for your point too. This isn't the first time I think the district looked at the possibility of a childcare partnership.
Well, we've talked about this for a number of years when I was a commissioner with Region Five, and that's got to be at least nine years ago. And we were told then from St. Cloud going north was the worst part of Minnesota trying to find childcare. So this is not going away. It's just getting worse and more condensed right here.
So what's the next step?
We, uh, you know, the timeline the city is under is, although December 31st feels like a long ways away, it's really not. It'll move quick. And so we want to continue to push this information out to community stakeholders. It's, I think it's slowly starting to, to get out there, but more formal communication. I know that, um, the radio reached out to myself and John this week and they'd like to have us on next week. I'm sure we'll have some coverage in the, of course, in the record coming up here soon. We'd also, as Kelsey indicated, we'd, we'd like to put together a working group that represents our community childcare in our district to do some of the, uh, getting into the weeds of the program. Is important right now. You're hopefully, as a board, will approve, will approve a school board retreat on October 5th. That'll be another opportunity for us to dig into this, look at the financial models and answer additional questions that you have. And Children's First Financial is willing to pop in virtually to that meeting if we'd like them to. And then because of the timeline, we're going to ask you folks on October 17th, your next meeting, to adopt a resolution to move forward with this partnership with the city. And I think according to John Rodamacher, the city would do the same thing at about the same time, would pass a resolution.
And then Greg, how does that affect the grant? I mean, what's the, December 31st is a deadline. You just have to have like a working agreement or what?
I think we have to have the total plan put in place and signed off on so that, um, we have to show how we're going to spend that money that goes according, according to that grant.
Just a quick thought here, and my mind is spinning here, but we're going to be renewing our bond referendum, the 10-year one that doesn't increase taxes. It just renews our, that we passed, what, 10 years ago? Is this a possibility of running, uh, another question on that for additional money? Is that legal to do that people could vote on and decide whether that's a possibility to generate some more money? I'm not saying that it, I mean, we can run question one, question two. And, and I know we're trying to create money for industrial arts kids in a wing because our community businesses are saying we'd like to train kids and keep them here in Little Falls, which I would. And I just didn't know if there's a possibility of running more questions to have people vote on it.
That's not sure though.
It's, it's next, 20, 23.
November of 2023.
23, so that's getting close.
We'll need to come back to our voters for approval of the existing operating levy. And that's a, that's a critical time period for the, the district to get that to move forward. As a school district, do you have the authority to lease levy, which is something we could do in this situation to help with the, the facility? And there's, there's room within that cap under lease levy to be able to do something like this. We talked more about that. I could share some financial information October 5th, but I, I think lease levy, at least right now, makes sense.
This group that you're talking about, the, um, operating group or the discussion group, has, um, I know from a few years ago that the county has a daycare group through the county. Have they been contacted and input put from them too?
Met with Brad Bold from Horace County to talk about some of the work that we've been doing, but I have not, we have not connected with.
Okay.
They do at the county have a program that they can help subsidize daycare costs for lower-income people. So you truly want to pull them into this, um, so that they know. And for those that are enrolling, let's enroll them in that program, you know, if anybody's eligible.
The Initiative Foundation is also engaged in childcare support. One of the things that they provide is free licensing for facilities. That's a piece we'll tap into.
Do you need kind of a straw vote? I mean, I don't think anybody's against moving forward on this, if that's what you need from us.
Not till after the retreat.
Yeah, but I mean, just a straw poll in favor of the idea. So in your planning stages, I mean, if, if we don't have any kind of consensus now, then there's no reason to move forward. But, um, you know, and do a lot of work. But I, I don't know if you mean a stroll, a straw thing or whatever. I mean, I think everybody sitting here is in favor of helping childcare, but the cost of it will be the question.
I guess I'd prefer to discuss it a little bit more before I.
Okay.
Participated in a straw vote.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, let's have that on the agenda for the retreat, October 5th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for considering and keep up all the good work you guys are doing.
Thank you.
And thank you for your support. I, I remember going back when we had a meeting here, um, if you're going to put a road through, through your property. You remember that.
I remember.
I remember those meetings.
Well, I was on both sides.
Yeah. Yeah, we just put you in the middle of the road.
They wanted the road to go this way and this way and this way.
And if you hadn't put it straight down the middle like that, we wouldn't have it. And then if you hadn't been willing to partner with the city in selling the land, we wouldn't have Barrett. So we wouldn't have more.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for the.
Thank you. I mean, this is how we all work together. The city, the school district and the county, you know, they all, and nowhere's in this state do we have something that's good with that partnership. That's why we've got what we've got.
And selling, selling you the property that sits on the largest underground water supply, that you, if you eventually can build a water tower, if you have something that happens, that's all part of working together. And that's what we're, I'm dedicated to doing the best I can for the kids of this district and the parents and our staff. All in favor of all of that. So let's work together and you guys put the dirt out on the fields. We haven't forgotten. So whatever we can do to help, this would be a big step forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Greg.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, Greg, you want to move forward with the enrollment report?
Board members in here, I made a copy of this slide. It may be difficult to see. Actually, you can't see. Could you see the slideshow?
Yeah.
Yes.
There we go.
There we are. Mark saved us.
So this is a snapshot at K through kindergarten through grade 12 enrollment. Does not include CEC, does not include PSEO, does not include any shared time students. It's essentially a student head count after the first week of school. And you can see going back to 2019, 2020, pre-COVID, our student enrollment count at 2,351. Like every district in every state across the country. When COVID hit, we saw all of our numbers dip. Homeschooling, students moving definitely impacted that number. You can see last year, we gained some students, some students back. And then this year, we're right at 2,300 students, which is a little bit below last year, but really not bad. And the biggest issue is when you look at Lindbergh. And if you see Lindbergh's at 505 students, we have a really small kindergarten group at Lindbergh right now, over 50 students. So if, if that number would have been consistent closer to 80, at 30 students, we'd be as high as we've been almost in four years.
How does this compare with the, um, estimates that were done last year for budget?
I don't have those numbers.
She has.
Uh, the number that was used to project the 22, 23 budget is 23, 35. So this number right now is right around 35, 36 below, um, what was projected for the year.
And that, that includes CEC as well, Shelley?
Oh, um, yes. So out of, what would have to be taken out of that 23, 35 is early childhood as well as CEC.
Ballpark number there.
That number, if you just give me a minute, um, I can find it. I gotta sift through a lot of spreadsheets here.
No problem. Sounds like you're the boss.
Okay, so if we look at just the K through high school, not, K-12 not including CEC, the number would be. Uh, we would have budgeted 28. Um, oh no, that's not right. Sorry. Sorry.
Did you have some that you forgot to tell us about?
No, no, I just included, uh, high school twice. 22, 67 is what we projected.
And that's just with the CEC, not the EC?
That does not include CEC or early childhood. It's a, it's a comparison to those numbers right there.
Okay. Thank you, Shelley.
Is there a projection on those two areas?
Uh, early childhood, we projected 25 and CEC, we projected, um, 43. That 43 obviously is not comparable to the number of students at CEC, but that is the seat time number that is used for us to, um, project our revenue and calculate our revenue off of.
Okay. So it looks like we're in pretty good shape, I mean, in terms of, from reading this, right?
Yeah, so far, as long as, you know, as long as enrollments, um, maintain throughout the year, which we all know that, you know, there'll be, there'll be peaks and dips.
Yep, yep.
Uh, if we can stay, if we can stay close to this number, um, it will be, it will be in line with projections.
What we projected. Thank you.
Anything else on enrollment for the share?
Do you have any ideas why Lindbergh might be so low compared to previous years? Because it looks like it just kind of keeps creeping.
I don't. One thing that we, we can look at, and I have not looked at it yet in, in our district, is the birth of four census numbers. Sometimes you can use those birth of four census numbers to, to ballpark, really likely ballpark what an incoming kindergarten section might look like. So I don't, it'd be interesting to see what that four-year-old count was last year in comparison to what our kindergarten numbers are.
Are other schools maxed out?
Pardon me?
Are other schools maxed out then for slots? So any available, new one would have to go to Lindbergh?
Yeah, that's a unique part of, of our school district is, right now, I think we have 23 kindergartners at Dr. Knight. We have, we allow our families to choose which school they can attend. So here's a, here's a great example of that relationship when children are in a school for a number of years. So what we see in, in Little Falls is because the preschool program is connected to Lincoln, Lincoln's numbers fill up right away. We have three classrooms at Lincoln, 20 students in a class, 60 students register right away. Families register right away at Lincoln. So then families that register at Lindbergh that are in that attendance area that choose to attend there, of course, register there. Any move-ins, anybody that didn't make it into Lincoln then registers at Lindbergh.
Interesting. We used to run preschool at Lindbergh. Now it's, anyway.
Okay. Next we'll go on to Nate Swenson, our middle school principal, for a presentation.
If I can, just a quick lead in. No, please, please come up here.
No, no.
I really appreciate Nate being here today. I really appreciate Nate being here today and the work he's done at the middle school with his transition back as his first year as middle school principal. But last year, in the search for Nate's position, we conducted a survey of families at the middle school and gave some very helpful information. One of the, the big questions that was out there from folks was grading practices and standards-based grading. So really appreciate Nate's, Nate's work and his transition to look at that, meet with the staff. And he has an update for you tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Johnson, thank you for having me here tonight. So Superintendent Johnson asks for me to give an update about grading, and I figured the best way to give the update was to provide some context around where we've been and then where we are now. So before I transitioned to Little Falls, I ended up having a lot of conversations with different staff members. And one of the gifts I was given too, in addition to that, was the feedback that the district had asked for in leadership at the middle school. It's actually, I read all the responses and it's actually quite sobering to, to look at it. And there were multiple themes that came through that feedback, from culture and climate to transparency and communication and grading. And so I found that really interesting, that it was in a, a feedback from families. And then I transitioned to the position and ended up meeting with a bunch more staff members and departments. I had conversations with parents and grading continued to come up over and over again. I was actually really surprised by that. And just so everyone knows, for the past several years, the middle school, actually, it's probably a couple of years, they've been using standards-based grading. And the idea of standards-based grading is a really, it's a really good one. And I also want to be clear that I trust the intentions of the people who led at the middle school before I got there. I, I know that their intentions behind it were really good. And through all of the feedback that I got from parents and staff members, what became very clear to me is that it was causing a ton of heartache that, and confusion, which I was really concerned about. It's the last thing that you need coming into a school year as a new person to, having there be confusion and heartache around something like grading. And so I also wanted to make sure that I was not making many decisions in isolation. And, and, and so it wasn't the new guy coming in, doing a bunch of new stuff. This was one of the areas where the amount of feedback I got was so compelling, it actually is very easy to make this decision. And so what I decided to do, again, based on all of the feedback that I received, is to, I want to be careful about my language because we're not going back to anything. We pivoted to traditional grading. So kids will be getting A's, B's and C's. We'll be using the traditional grade scale at the middle school now. And I, I did that for a bunch of reasons, what I just told you. The feedback was very compelling. It will eliminate confusion. When you think about secondary students, when kids transition to the middle school, they become a secondary student. And I am a huge believer in coherence. And one of the things that are, that we didn't have with standards-based grading is coherence for, as secondary students. So kids would transition from the middle school and then experience something different at the high school. With traditional grades, there will be that 6, 12 coherence. So the experience kids get here, how they view and internalize their grades will be the same at, at the high school. And then finally, I would just add, one of the most important conversations that can take place at the middle school level, or any level for that matter, is the conversation between families and the teachers. And when there is clarity around academic conversations, how your kiddos are doing in school, everyone wins. And I am convinced that pivoting to traditional grades will, will be a really positive thing for our students and families. And I am, it's one of the few times I will be in front of you with so much confidence about something. The feedback has, has been really positive. And I, and I would anticipate we're probably not going to have to be talking a lot about grades moving forward. And then the last thing that I will say is that there are a lot of things that can impact the education of a middle school student. And I think that there are things other than grading that we can and should be doing at the middle school that will improve the outcomes of our, of our kids. So I'm ready to move forward with that. And I think that students and staff in our community are as well. Interestingly, I said last thing. I have one more thing to offer. I feel like I'm uniquely positioned with this discussion because the district where I lived prior to coming back to live in Little Falls was the same district that our middle school went to visit and get the idea for standards-based grading. So while that was happening, I was a parent in that district. And it's just as chance would have it, the district we were living in abandoned standards-based grading when, when our school was just starting to get on the train with standards-based grading. And so it's really, we're not the only ones who have kind of went away from standards-based grading. So again, I just share that with you because I've had that experience as a parent. And I think traditional grades just do a little bit better job of communicating progress to families, which is what we want, is to be able to engage in those conversations with families in a meaningful way. So that's my update about grading. What questions might you have for me?
I do. Communication to me is one of the strongest tools we have, communicating between the teachers, the students and the parents. I think somehow we really need to let the parents know that giving the feedback has worked. And I think a lot of times, a lot of them felt very frustrated that they weren't getting responses, they weren't being heard. You're doing this and basing it on what you got on feedback from not just the teachers and hopefully some of the students too, that the parents were heard this time and are working with us. We're working with them.
Yeah, it was, I, if I may, when we had our open house, I had the most, something happened that I never had happen before is I was talking to parents about just some of the changes that they might expect, especially seventh and eighth grade families who had gone to the middle school. And I, and I talked about the, the grading that we were going to do. And I was so taken aback because the entire, everybody in there started clapping. And I've nev, I've never had something like that happen in that type of an environment before. So I'm hoping to, like you say, that, that families feel like they have been heard and that we're on a path that will, that makes maybe just a little bit more sense right now for our school.
Well, thank you for taking that initiative and pivoting us.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Nate?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Okay, Greg, we're going to go back to you again for your superintendent's report.
Just real quickly, a few items. We have a little bit of construction taking place within the district, redoing the dugouts at the baseball field. You can see the pictures here that we're working on. And then the, the Nordic Ski Facility shed, storage area is under construction. Actually, they're there this, they started today. You could see some of the rafters in the back that hopefully, Mark, did you have a timeline for?
I'll start going up tomorrow.
There we go. And then I promised the dance team I would share this information, their booster club, and maybe we should, I should have included it in the donations. But that group, I met one of their booster club parents when I was at the radio station a couple of weeks ago. And really fun to talk to this parent and how excited he was with the progress the dance team has been making. But this group, in just a short period of time, has been able to raise resources to support what our, our dance team is doing. So you can see uniforms for the JV kick team, varsity jazz uniforms, varsity kick uniforms, and contributing $8,700 to our. Exciting to see. And then I just want to formally thank our entire staff for what I think has been a, a smooth, successful start to the school year as we enter a new week this week. It's, you know, there's always a few bumps in the road, things that need to be addressed, but very pleased with the work of our administrative team, the work of our teachers, the work of our support staff, and especially our students in getting back to business in the new school year.
Thank you. We have no old or unfinished business to discuss tonight, so we'll move into new business. First on it, this is an informational item only. Kevin Jordan was going to give an update on this for us for the MSHSL annual membership.
Actually, I'm not, yeah, I, I think it's.
I was gonna say, I didn't see.
Yeah, it's just, it's the approval of the high school leave bill for the year.
This is the information only, though?
It says information only.
Only, only, okay. So then next meeting, we'll, we'll bring that back. We'll make sure Kevin's here.
Okay. So next, then, we're going into, we have to, this happens every year, set truth and taxation meeting date, which is requested to be December 19, 2022. And before we any discussion, I need a motion for that, please.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
I'll second.
Here, we have a motion and a second on the floor for, I'll read the description that would be for that. And the district has scheduled its truth and taxation meeting for 6:00 PM on Monday, December 19, a regular board meeting date. As the district is required to certify its meeting dates to the county auditors of Morrison, Todd and Crow Wing Counties by September 30, the administration is requesting that the Board of Education ratify the selected date and approve the final adoption date. This is what is the first and second for the motion is for. Is there any discussion or comments with this? Hearing none. All those in favor for the recommended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, is this the second one that we have to do too? We're in the second? Okay. The second recommended motion is move that the Board of Education schedules truth and taxation meet, meeting for December 19, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Also, move to schedule the final adoption meeting for December 19, 2022. I need a first and a second on that, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Doug.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any other discussion or questions for Shelley on any of that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next action item is to certify maximum 2023 property tax levy and authorize, authorize the signature for the same. This is also another annual event that we do. I need a motion on this.
So moved.
Thank you, Mark. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Doug. And this reads, "In years past, the board has certified the maximum levy at its September board meeting. The board has always hosted a public meeting to explain the levy and to take public comment and questions. This meeting is held in December. The certification of the maximum allows the counties to prepare tax statements for the public, so they have the information prior to this meeting. A final certification would take place after the meeting is held for the public in December. Administration is asking that the board certify the maximum levy and the authorization of, and to authorize the clerk of the board to sign the certi, certificate, certification. Information provided at the meeting." So this is for Mark's signature on that. So any questions on that or anything that Shelley can answer for you on the tax levy?
Is this similar, Shelley, to like the county where you certify the maximum because you can't raise it, but you can always.
Correct.
Now, we like it when it can go down. Any other comments or questions for Shelley? Hearing none. You are now voting on the property tax levy. Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Next is a non-action item. And this is the review of the mandatory policies that we do not currently have.
Yeah, before we start reading every policy, I'm kidding about that. Yeah.
I thought Kelsey and Julie would just take turns.
We did it all.
They did a great job at the, at the Board Policy Committee meeting where we went through these policies as, and as indicated, they are mandatory policies by the state that we currently don't have on our website. So both Julie and, and Kelsey already have provided some feedback to me. And so Kelly and I will take a look at that feedback. And when we bring these back for the second read in October, we'll have those changes redlined so you can see those. But they're mandatory MS Minnesota School Board Association policies that we, we need to have on our website. And tweak a few practices. I know that a couple of these policies call for the formation of committees primarily related to teaching and learning that I think are important for us to put in place.
Thank you both for taking on that duty. I know when I was on it, you couldn't sleep at night. That's what you did, was read all those policies. So, okay. Next one on our agenda is the School Resource Officer Agreement, which I was just looking for here.
Appreciate your support for this contract. And as, as Brad indicated earlier, it does call for an increase in the, the salary and partnership with the city. And I, my understanding, and this sounds a little bit similar to what I experienced in a different district, is the city has kept that, that fee relatively low. It hasn't changed much. And now, as wages continue to increase and they settle contracts, asking for that additional support for a resource that's extremely valuable.
Okay, before we go into discussion anymore on this, I need a motion for the agreement of the School Resource Officer position.
So moved.
Thank you. Brad, in a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Kelsey. Any questions or comments?
So what's the different amount that we are being asked to pay this year versus last year? Does anybody have an idea?
Shelley will have it.
It is, uh, we are being asked to pay $50,000 for the year compared to $34,000 for the year.
So 16 grand.
Do they have an explanation as to why such a huge hike?
Wages, salaries continue to go up as they settle their contracts.
That's a big jump.
Yeah, that is a big jump.
And I think like I indicated, that they've, they maybe haven't kept up with the increases in wages over the years. Again, it is a big jump all at once. I wish it would have been steady. But again, and I know you folks aren't questioning at all the value of the position.
Oh, no, we absolutely need the person.
Extremely important. But I do know, I appreciate your comment, Brad, when Greg was here about that concern. And I did share that with John as well. And I think it, I, I think as we talk more about the childcare partnership, you'll see, you'll see the city has some availability and resources that will come forward to support our work that will be a very nice trade-off.
In-kind trade-off. I don't have a problem with.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. And if there's no other discussion, all those in favor for this agreement signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Another action item, approval of the school board retreat at the Initiative Foundation. We were asked to consider checking our calendars. The board retreat would be October 5 at 5:00 PM, running approximately nine hours. And this would be downtown at the Initiative.
Nine hours? Holy cow. I just had a heart attack.
Nope, nope, you're not covered. Until 9:00 PM, I'm sorry. Four hours. Got to get the glasses refocused here. At the Initiative Foundation, same place we met last time. At the Initiative Foundation, same place we met last time. I need a motion for this, please.
So moved.
For Mark, nine hours or four?
Four. I'm hoping they talk fast for another two and a half.
Okay, and a second, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Kelsey. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve having our board retreat October fifth from five to nine at the Initiative Foundation downtown in Little Falls. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we will be listening to Mr. Deal on information for the approval of sale of surplus equipment. One, one, Mark, this is an action item, so before Mark should be speaking, we do have a, need to have a motion and a second on the floor.
You're not approving the sale to any.
Oh, okay.
You're approving, you just have to authorize me to advertise that this equipment would be for sale.
Okay.
So let's make a deal, let's know what it is.
So we have a clarification, I, but I still need a motion before we turn it over to Mark.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, convince us.
Well, I have some, I have some old network switches and some old iPads that are just sitting on shelves, waiting to be disposed of. And, uh, some of that equipment still has, uh, used market knowledge, on a secondary market. And I've been approached by probably no more than a dozen, well, yeah, about a dozen companies about just in the last, since July first. Do you have any equipment that you're looking to get rid of? So our, my intent would be to, um, we'd have to put a, uh, ad in the paper, but then to email these companies with a list of the equipment that we have, ask them to give us their best price, um, for that equipment, and then we would dispose of it. The equipment is all, has all been factory reset. So there's no data on there or anything that a company could use to, um, or anyone could use to try to ascertain any information about anybody that used it.
This is similar to what we've done the last few years?
I'm assuming they're cents on the dollar. It, uh, depends, the switches are a little bit more, iPads are going to be cents on the dollar, yes.
Any other comments or questions for Mark?
Would this be open to everybody first, or is it kind of a buy-one-buy-all?
It's a buy-one-buy-all. You can imagine what that would be like if it were.
Selling individually.
Selling individually.
You'd be sitting at the school store a lot.
Um, yeah, we would. And typically, like, uh, typically these iPads end up getting bought by companies that, um, refurbish anything that needs to be fixed on them. And then they, a lot of times, not, not all the time, but a lot of times they end up going to third, third world countries to be used by, in schools and things over there. So in the end, it's probably good. I've been asked many times if we have anything that we can sell. And the statute, from the, the state statute says that if we're going to, um, sell a piece of equipment that's no longer used, first you have to approve an advertisement for that sale. But then it's, it's, um, it's a public bid process type of a thing. So it's not just, I can sell, mark a used laptop. I can't, statutorily, I cannot do that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of giving Mr. Deal the permission to run the ad to have a sale of our surplus equipment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? A non-action item in your grouping, you should have a draft of the preschool twenty-two, twenty-three handbook. Thank you, Kelsey, for getting us caught up on that one. So this is a non-action item. Please review it before it comes up for, for vote. Next, four-letter word, snow removal.
Yes.
Don't want to think about that. And this is an action item. Um, we need to explore our options because, believe it or not, snow is coming again. So I need a motion for us to move forward on this RFP.
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad, and thank you, Mark. Okay, the district would like to once again explore the option and costs of contracting with an outside agency for snow removal, um, for the winter of twenty-twenty-two and going into twenty-three. This is, we're in twenty-two now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Hey, I wasn't sure about hours, so let's go with it. And, um, this would be for a three-year contract. Are there any comments or questions for this motion?
Is this the one that last year was very, very close? And we just went with the person that we have used in the past because we had many complaints?
Um, yeah, last time, so three years ago when we renewed the contract, we got, um, proposals from two different, uh, companies, uh, pretty close to each other as far as the proposals go. And so, um, we chose to go with the company that we've already been working with at that point.
Do you have any comment on, were we satisfied with the three years? I mean, should, should it be close again, or do we have any issues, or?
I myself probably am not the best one to ask that question of. Glenn Salver, our head of grounds, is the individual that works with them and alongside of them. Um, I can, I can think of a couple of things that Glenn brought up to me. Um, but then the company, uh, took care of them right away. So, um, uh, I, when the proposals come in, I usually go talk to Glenn before making any decisions to see, just to get his input, um, on our services so far.
Okay.
Now, this is for all of our buildings, all of our lots?
Everywhere, yep.
Uh, before I vote, that would be a really nice feature, that we have no complaints or we've had a lot of complaints.
Yep, I definitely always bring Glenn into the conversation when making the final decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of, um, having the RFP going out for the three-year contract for the winter of twenty-two, twenty-three? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is report from board members. Today, you're kind of going to get a little bit of a break, but you've each been assigned this year a building. So, um, future months, please try to have some connection with the building and give us a slight update. Doesn't have to be a large thing, but something posit, hopefully positive that has happened at each of our buildings would be appreciated.
And Chair, can I just interject?
You sure can.
Thank you for sharing that. At the October fifth retreat, we'll spend some time too, just talking about what that might look like as a liaison.
That'll help many of us. I know I have a meeting set up for the third with my building, so we can get some feedback on the fifth then. So, board reports, Doug?
Well, I'll tell you, I am in my building a lot. I'm at the high school and, um, I'm there in the morning to work out. It's a pretty active place at six A.M. in the morning with basketball and, uh, sports. And, um, I've also been to a few different, uh, events. And they seem to be kind of what everybody and kind of what Greg has alluded to, that it's all kind of turning into kind of the same old stuff, you know? We're getting a lot of participation and seeing a lot of cool things going on, so, yeah.
Julie?
I've actually been in touch with Mr. Edgerton and Dr. Knight. So we, everything's off to a good start for the school year.
Great. Brad?
I haven't been in touch with my school yet, but I've had, uh, I'm on the finance committee, which we've met and we're kind of formulating plans as to how we're going to move forward. Uh, and I think in the coming months, we'll have more of a clearer process, hopefully, as to what the financial needs are of certain areas. And then secondly, on the teaching and learning, um, the school districts, I believe, are really working hard to look at math curriculums. We have a curriculum director that gets our materials. And then the teachers and the principal and all of them look at those. And then they come to a conclusion as to what math series or math materials that we're going to use. That's presented to the superintendent. And the superintendent then will bring us a cost, and the board will approve it. And that's basically how our curriculum cycle works. It isn't an individual board member approving, it's the process that we follow. And everything that we do has to be standards-based and approved by the state of Minnesota. So that's what we'll be looking at when, and it's generally about a year process that the people take. Um, so we don't have just willy-nilly, um, stuff for, uh, our classrooms. It's about a year process. And hopefully then we have it budgeted and find out how much it costs and go from there. So Greg has set those committees up, and those are the committees that I've been on, so. That's all.
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay.
They won't let me in any building.
Kelsey?
Uh, my committees have been the policy committee, and we are quite busy reading. So the mandated ones that we're missing are in your guys' packet. So we've started doing those first, and then we'll start, um, updating and revising some of the other ones that are maybe needing to be looked at sooner rather than later. We had a list of them that we were going to go over. And then, uh, Sharon and I are on an H.R. committee meeting. So we had a lot to discuss at that meeting, um, especially with our new, kind of the H.R. and the business manager positions that we're going to have. So there was a lot to discuss.
It was interesting.
Which brings me to Shelley. This is your last board meeting, I think. We are very sad to see you go, but we wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done for this district.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Been good to work with. Thank you, Shelley, and thank you for.
Appreciate it.
For mentioning that. My building is the middle school, and I am set up with Nate Swenson to meet on October third. And so I hopefully will bring you a very positive report, um, at our October meeting. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board? Hearing none, I'll take, accept a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good evening.